I'd like to call to order the June 7th, 2016 City of Statesboro City Council Meeting. I would like to ask Councilman Jeff Young to please lead us in our invitation and pledge allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings that you've bestowed upon us as individuals and us as a community as a whole. Lord, we just pray that we will all continue to work together to better our community, find ways to glorify you. We pray, Father, for clearness of direction and focus in our spiritualities and in our worship and in Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started today, I'm going to do just a little quick crosskeeping item here. Please note that I'm going to ask for amendment, I have a motion to amend item fourteen of the agenda. Item fourteen to also include potential litigation in that executive session discussion. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
No.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye. Opposed? All right, so the motion, the agenda is amended. The second thing I also want to make you all aware of this morning is that we have scheduled our annual budget hearing for ten o'clock. Obviously, we did that in hopes that we'd be got it done, you know, by ten o'clock. With the agenda, we very well may, but if we're not, and it gets to be ten o'clock, I will ask for a motion to temporarily adjourn this meeting, and then a motion to open a public hearing on the budget, which normally tends to be fairly short, and then we'll motion to go back into our city council meeting. So, that doesn't show up on your agenda, but, you know, at ten o'clock, kind of expect that interruption. All right, we'll go to agenda item three, which is recognition and public presentations. Item A is an update and report presentation on the Parks Division within the Department of Public Works and Engineering. I'm going to ask Robert Simmons to come forward, but prior to his speaking, I demand that City Mayor of Cheshire, if you want to make any comments.
Thanks, Mayor. I asked Robert Simmons two or three months ago actually to prepare this, and we've kind of been putting it off, which is really timely because of some other things that we have on the agenda today, with the tree, just speaking about the tree board and some of their members. And I don't think Robert and his crews in engineering and public works in general get enough credit for what they do on our parks. And one thing that we've done is to go, not just have a park, but improve those parks, particularly three or four of them around town, and there's some other things that we'll talk about. Because our budget is tight and our resources are limited, he has really done an excellent job over, I don't know, eight, ten years working on these, and all of a sudden, what was just open green spaces is now got a lot of amenities to it, and you see a lot of people attracted to them. I know that's a big issue of councils, parks and sidewalks and those types of things, and sometimes when you're there on resources, you can still do a lot of things and get a lot of things done. So, I thought we'd update you on this today and tell you where exactly they've done and accomplished.
Thanks, sir. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Robert Simmons, Street and Parks Division attended. This morning, I'd like to provide you with an update on projects we've been working on this past year. First, I'm going to start with Red Sox Park. Red Sox Park located over off of West Jones and Parker. This park, this park for several years had been semi-nedlect, it really had to sit on a lot of road. It needed a lot of updating. We were able to partner with Fuller County Historical Society on this park. They brought in the old clock tower, they brought in new shrubbery, and supplied funding to put in some benches and other landscaping. We were able to, through in-house, do a new parking lot. We were able to put in trash cans and additional trees, shrubs, and some hardscape items and make good tables and swing. In May of last year, we had a rededication. Some of y'all were at it. We had a really nice crowd turn out. We ended up having a local choir, and then the Fuller County Historical Society, who helped with the rededication, or helped with the rededication, supplied snacks and drinks for everyone in attendance. With that, before I move on, I'd also like to remind everybody they did owe us $10,000 to this project. Next up, Rockwell Park. We teamed up with Beautification and Tree Board to make this happen. As you can see, this park has a pond in it, something that none of our other parks in town have. After having, after having several meetings with the neighborhood to establish what they would like to see in the park, a master plan has been developed, as well as a budget. Due to the size of this project, it's been split into three phases. This year, phase one has been started. With the help of the street department, we removed overgrown juniper, we removed the overgrown juniper and shrubs, then we removed the old tables and trash cans. Phase one consisted of, first of all, establishing two parking lots. We then installed new tables, trash cans, and added new features this year, swings, to the area. This project is still ongoing. We've just received the last order of hardscape items, and we'll be starting to put those in this week and next week. A portion of phase two is actually being started this year. We have a little funding left over here at the end of the budget, and we are installing some of the landscaping with this additional funding over the next few weeks. This will be a continuing project, and as funding becomes available, we will move on into, further into phase two and phase three. This year, we were asked to help with the landscaping of the State's Department of Parks and Engineering Station One. This was a really great project, and I feel it turned out very nice. I'd like to say thank you to Chief Grounds and Deputy Chief Ronnie Shaw for allowing us to work on this project. With the establishment of the mid-block pedestrian crosses in Golden River Drive, we were asked to provide landscaping for these islands. First, I'd like to thank the gas department, water department, because they were able to run the water to each of these islands to help us with irrigation that allow us to put these shrubs and flowers in. Other projects, teaming up with the tree board, we planted forty dogwood trees on College Boulevard, an oak tree at the library, and in addition, we helped the tree board with planting the five trees at Matty Lively Elementary School for their Arbor Day program this year. Where do we go from here? Future projects, of course, we'll continue with Edgewood Park. We will finish that project out in the future. We have next up, municipal court and IT department, we've been asked to work on the landscaping for that. Henry Clay with Beautification Commission is working on the landscape design, and will be handling installation. Savannah Avenue, major project going on in town, we'll be working on the landscaping of those islands. Bigger and better, we're moving to Marvin Avenue Park. Cheshire, excuse me, Mr. Cheshire has asked us to review that park. There's a park over off of Fair Road near Marvin Avenue, basically a green space that's been undeveloped for all these years. Within the next five years, we hope to have a master plan in place, a budget worked out for y'all to consider, and hopefully they'll be funding at that time to move forward. In the meantime, we have actually taken some of the old hardscape items that were used in Edgewood Park, done a little work to them, and used them over there to make do until we can do bigger and better. With that, I'd like to thank you for the time this morning and provide you with this update.
I'm going to ask the office one. Tell me about Savannah Avenue landscaping. What is going in the islands down the middle of the road?
Okay, Savannah Avenue landscaping, we've actually got several challenges over there. Anybody who's drove down through there, you're in shade part of the time, you're in sun part of the time, and you're in sun all the time. So, we've noticed that every one of these islands has a different type of atmosphere in it. We're looking at low-growing shrubs, basically nothing higher than two feet is what we're going to look at in there. We're looking at drip roses, we're looking at the miniature marvenias, we're looking at the pixie borpells, or just escaping, one of the hollies, Carissa hollies, that type of stuff will be going in there. To my knowledge, at this time, we have not finished putting any annuals in those beds. We're going to try to do low maintenance, low height, that is our goal up there. Low profile, to where it can be seen, can be seen over the top of traffic and pedestrians, especially with the mid-block crossings. We don't want to put anything there that will hinder or drive us on the scene.
Does that look good? The park over in Edgewood looks great.
Thank you.
You could use it all the time, I'd really appreciate it.
All right. Yeah, Councilman Riggs was a big, big supporter of the player over there, that's his district, and he did come out for the neighborhood meetings and met with constituents over there to help us out. I'm figuring out exactly what they want over there.
Mentally, that, Marvin Avenue, does that neighborhood have homeowners association like Edgewood? But I know there's a lot of people that live there, fifteen years, but I know there's also a lot of, a lot of rentals.
A lot of rentals now. That, that particular area is, is changing over. I am not familiar with the homeowners association at this time, but as, as this progresses, we will try to make contact. I know at least four residents over there, who, like I said, have been there for ages, and we will get them involved with this. A couple of them already come out here and met with us and gave us a little bit of history and background on that.
And again, I want to thank the tree board, and I see Virginia Ann Waters is here, and the Fuller County Historical Society, they've made a lot of donations, and others have made it, I probably missed somebody here. That's how these things work, and that's why I just feel good, there's a lot of skin in here. Thank y'all very much.
If there are no further questions, I will ask them soon. Do you have anybody that's asked to make a public comment regarding an agenda item?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Agenda item five, consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda. I want the council to please review and then make a motion.
Make it approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Agenda item six, this is what I've been looking forward to, we reviewed the agenda last week, which is a recognition and reappointment of the following members of the City of Statesboro Beautification Commission as emeritus members. I will ask Mr. Simmons to please come forward.
Good morning again, Mayor and Council. Robert Simmons, Street and Parks Division attended. In the mid-1950s, then-Major Bill Bowen recognized the need to beautify the City of Statesboro and the importance of landscape, and landscaping the city facilities, parks, and green space with trees, shrubs, and flowers. Mayor Bowen, Bowen, knowing that the city had limited funding, established the City of Statesboro Beautification Commission. Mayor Bowen appointed Ms. Nan Boyen to the commission, and with that appointment, she started seeking help from various citizens who would make things happen. This commission then got to work finding various garden clubs, civic organizations, and individuals to help fund the beautification of several parks and cemetery, and the cemetery the city had at the time. Several of these ladies that we're here to honor today are original members of the Beautification Together, they have an excess of well over 150 years of combined service to the Beautification Commission and City of Statesboro. Mayor and Council, the Beautification Commission would like to recognize the following members: Mrs. Jean Smith Matthews, Mrs. Fay Boy Smith, Mrs. Helen Proctor Morris Watson, Ms. Martha Wilma Simmons Coleman. On April 13th, 2016, these ladies were honored at a luncheon in the home of Virginia Ann and Bill Waters. Over the next couple of weeks, we will have a bench for each one of these ladies with a plaque attached that will be placed in the appropriate parts from downtown. Mayor Moore, the Beautification Commission of the City of Statesboro would like to request the appointment of these ladies to the Beautification Commission with the emeritus status for the many years of their dedicated and unwavering service to the City of Statesboro. At this time, I would like to call up Henry Clay, the Beautification Chairman. And I will turn it over to Mayor Moore.
Before we present the plaques, and I'll ask while I'm doing this, if y'all have my own coming forward, for those who are being honored, and I've been saying that Ms. Watson is not here today, be with us, I hope she's fine, everything's okay. I would like to ask for a motion from council to appoint these individuals as emeritus members. Ms. Martha Wilma Simmons Coleman, Ms. Jean Smith Matthews, Mrs. Fay Boy Smith, and Mrs. Helen Proctor Morris Watson. Do I have a motion to do so?
No.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. I take great joy in doing this because I can remember all of these ladies from the time that I can't remember. I'm 53, so it's no secret I'm old, and so, yeah, if I didn't say Virginia, I wouldn't. So, anyway, it is my, my pleasure to be the person that gets to speak today in honor of your service. I don't think, in the times that we are in today, that people appreciate just how important it is to do little things all the time. A plant here, a shrub there, a tree there, and you turn around, and it makes all the difference in the world. And I know growing up how important it was for you all to do that public service in making Statesboro a beautiful place. And we will be forever blessed for what you have done, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart, and our community thanks you from the bottom of their collective heart. So, I'm going to stand here and ask if it will be okay if council will come down and let's get a picture. Any, I don't know if your families want to come up and be able to hold, oh, stop. Basically, come on up here. All right. What I want to do again. Okay. Let's, let's, won't you come up? Not hold it one here. Good thing. Let's walk off. There we go. Robert, come on. Squad. I don't want anybody to round the applause.
But as it says, certificate of appointment, with your name, you sit by the point of seat of Statesboro Beautification Commission, in that day's day, by Mayor and Council, are emeritus.
Now, the obvious question is, Mr. Simmons, do these ladies get to pick which parts their beds go in? You know, I'm going to study political politics.
I would say, I would say yes. I would say yes with one suggestion. As much time as myself and Ms. Jean spent at the park at First Baptist Church, back when they were doing their rebuild of the church and adding all, she and I spent many hours up there. I'd like her to consider placing her bench at that park facing the, the boundaries up there, because I know she had a lot of work that she did on making that happen. I've heard the story many times. But they, but yes, ma'am, if they want it somewhere particular, we will try our darndest to have it put there.
Well, I can hear it now. Mayor and Council, y'all can put your bench where? I don't think you'll get any disagree on that side. It shouldn't have been planned, it's going to go in there.
I don't have that.
It's beautiful. Have you almost, I don't know, you almost over line?
I'm just laughing.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. You're next one. I'm saying the hardest part is being elected official at nine o'clock, I don't want to have one of them. Okay, we'll move to agenda item seven, which is, not nearly as exciting, but informative of the fiscal year 2015, half of the mysteries.
Well, that's a hard act to follow. I heard the financial statements.
Don't forget money talk.
You'll see, I once morning, I just want to thank Mayor and Council for the opportunity to, for our firm's service, the city auditors, and one of the things, Cindy West and her staff for providing information for us to do the audit, and y'all had the copy of the capra, I think y'all were given, and it was sent off, we had the certification of the award, I'm actually getting where you're going to think from the beginning here. Anyway, I know there's a lot of information here, and I'm not going, I take a lot of time, just trying to just really briefly kind of point out a few things in the capra. As you see in the table contents, there is, you know, the table contents itself is, you can buy pages long, so, but if you just follow that table contents, you know, it gives you the different sections of the, of the capra. And after the introduction and so forth, there is, and then you get into the financial section, of course, you have our independent auditors report, which is unmodified opinion, and then the management discussion and analysis follow that, and that's good summary information on the financial information for the city. We do that management discussion and analysis. One thing to mention in this fiscal year, city, along with all of the governments, were required to adopt Governor of County Standards Board number 68, which changed the accounting for pension plans. And the city was one of the few government governments that we dealt with. The, the net effect on beginning net position was only about $1,600, you know, on most government governments that dealt with it, it can be several hundred thousand, you know, or even a million, you know. So, so it didn't have a large effect on your beginning net position for the city, that new county standard. If you'll turn to page 13 and 14, that's, it's what's referred to as the Governor-wide provincial statements. And so that includes all the funds for the city, government-wide activities and business type activities, government-wide activities, of course, being the general fund and all your special revenue funds, business-type activities being all the private grant runs like water, sewer, gas, solid waste, sanitation. It also includes a column there on page 13 for component unit, which is the downtown State for Development Authority, considered a component unit for the city. You see there on page 13, total assets for the city was approximately 112.7 billion, compared to previous year, that was an increase of almost nine billion, or 9% increase in total assets. Of course, most of your assets are tied up in capital assets. Total capital assets, net accumulated appreciation was about 89.2 billion. Total net position, which would be your assets plus your liabilities, your total net position down at the bottom of page 13 was approximately 84.4 billion. Net position increased from previous year approximately 7.5 billion, or 10% increase in net position, so that's very good. And one thing to mention, in that net position, about 84.4 billion, 73.4 of it's invested in capital assets and net-related debt, so a lot of your net position is, you know, is invested in, in those capital assets. Unrestricted net position, that's not invested capital assets or not restricted for certain purposes, unrestricted net position was about 5 million. That, that increased by almost 2 billion, which is very good in your unrestricted net position. The next page is your statement of activities, again, at the government-wide level. The way the statement works is, on the left side, it's got the expenses, it's got the program of functions provided by the government, and in the first column, the expenses of providing that service, and then the next three columns are revenues that can be directly associated with providing that service, and it gives you a net cost of providing that, and then down below, you've got, you have your general revenues to fund those that are not funded, you know, by their own revenues, of course, that's when you're, that's why you have to have property taxes and other taxes, insurance, credit taxes, so forth. And then down the bottom, you'll see the change in net position. For governmental activities, you had an increase of about 1.9 billion, and on business-type activities, you had an increase of about 5.6 million to get to the total, 7.5 billion that I mentioned. On page 15, this is the governmental funds, the first column being the general fund, and just to point out, down at the bottom, you see fund balance for the general fund, had a billion, 643,000. So, that was an increase of about 843,000, so that's good, you've been able to build back up the fund balance last few years, and at the end of 13, G3013, it was at 547,000, so you can have to increase that back up to about a million, million six. Still not exactly where you wanted to be, you have to roll a thumb, you want fund balance about 25% of your annual expenditures, so you'd be great, you see, on up to about 2.8 million, but at least there was years, several years back, that it was pretty much to zero. So, you can also build that fund balance back up. And you can see in the SPOSS funds, third, fourth columns, in the SPOSS fund balance, you have almost 4 billion SPOSS funds balances at the end of G3015. If you'll turn to page 19, 20, just to point out, that's your budget versus actual for the general fund, and revenues were over budget, balanced budgeted, and expenditures were under balanced budgeted, so you had a favorable variance for the budget for the general fund. The proprietary funds, you should start on page 22. You see the, the different columns for the different enterprise funds, water, sewer, gas, solid waste collection, so forth. The proprietary funds had total assets, you see over in that sixth column, 72.8 billion. The proprietary funds had total assets, you see over in that sixth column, was seventy-two point eight billion in total assets. Again, most of their assets are tied up in capital assets in infrastructure. And that, in, in that infrastructure, net capital assets increased for the year about four point one billion, you know, due to infrastructure. So, then that was net depreciation. On page twenty-three, you see the net change, the change in net position down at the bottom, near the bottom of page twenty-three, for all the proprietary funds, five point five billion. And that last column is the internal service funds, um, which would be your health insurance fund. Is the, the main one in the, the other, the labor works column, insurance fund. And on that, you see that it had net position in internal service funds of almost one point six billion, internal service funds. But that's internal service funds within the, where the, you know, it's charged the, the other funds, and for health, health insurance, so forth. And in health insurance fund, along with it, had a key related net position of about nine hundred eighty thousand, so in good shape with the, uh, health insurance.
Where is that number, nine hundred eighteen?
Um, the, that last column is, is the total, all of them, you have to flip back to, to combining schedules.
It's the total existing plus additional.
Well, it's all the funds, if you'll flip back to page ninety-six.
No, nine hundred is the existing plus the, the additional fund balance that increased in two thousand and sixteen.
Yeah, the increase, yeah, yeah, the nine eighteen was the, the end, net position, it increased during the year about two hundred nineteen thousand.
Just for health, right?
Yeah, just for the, for the health insurance, so it increased the net position. But those internal service funds are on ninety-six, ninety-seven, if you prefer to. It also includes the fleet management, fleet management had net position of about three hundred sixty-four thousand. It also has the information fact, knowledge, internal service fund down, which was a new internal service fund. And the first year, uh, had an increase in net position of a hundred and four. And on page.
Just real quick, the internal service fund, the fund that, uh, grants that's.
That's charging other funds.
Charging other funds, okay.
It's charging, you know, the, the general fund, all the works, all the funds.
Like the land department does.
Right. And what happened with the government-wide financial statements, the first two statements were, you know, any excess, and then it's allocated back out to reduce, you know, the total expenses. Citywide, or if they had a deficit, the opposite, you have to increase the, all the expenses. The notes to the financial statements start on page twenty-six through fifty-two. One thing I just want to really point out, the notes to the financial statements is, uh, on page fifty-one, just to point out, um, the other plus one of the benefits, uh, the sovereign has been discussing in the past, this is, this is for providing health insurance coverage to retirees. And that liability accumulated, accumulated, uh, obligation right now is almost two point four billion. That's required to accumulate in the city, is not, you know, set aside. It's not completely funded that, uh, that liability. And then after the notices, financial statements, is supplemental information, that starts on page fifty-three. There's a lot of combining schedules for all of the, the non-major governmental funds, like special revenue funds, on page seventy-two and seventy-three. And then a lot of individual fund statements. Then after the supplemental information, you know, when you do a capra, that you require, it's just fiscal information that follows that. And then the, 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 the great fact is our report on internal control of our financial reporting and compliance. And we had two internal control findings on, you know, um, that were considered, you know, significant issues, but not material weaknesses. So, that's kind of, I'm just a quick, you know, conversation, if you think you'd like to answer any questions. Anyone might have, would be glad to, to, with any of you individually, if you don't have any questions, I'd be willing to.
I do have one question, Cindy, by the way, as you said. At the end of two thousand and fifteen, fiscal year, we had nine seventeen in the health insurance fund. What do we anticipate that being at the end of two thousand and sixteen? We come back to that issue. I'm just curious, has it popped up about two hundred fifty thousand, two thirty, something like that, I'm just curious if we're on that same track?
We are looking at increasing net assets to two thousand, twenty-four, twenty-sixteen.
Okay. So, about less than a third of what we did the previous year? Is that optimistic or conservative?
That's what we betched it, and it was, it's pretty conservative.
It depends on how many four hours you break, how many people you see.
Richard, I do have one question for you. And I know that, um, the implementation of the new software has been challenging on some levels. So, I mean, from what you can see, is it going to make things easier? Should the recording back and compilation documents like this become easier with that, or not? I know, I'm just, I know we've been struggling with getting that stuff in place. So, anybody can answer, anybody?
Well, I mean, we have to work with the new system, of course, you have to, this is for you.
It will, right now with, um, or in the past with our four hundred system, we have had to convert the information into Excel, much like very, there's a lot of cleanup. Now, we, we are, it has the option to export it to Excel, which we will never be able to give to the auditors or whatever, so that's something that's very important. As we get into visiting the program more, we will be able to provide a lot more reports and somebody more detailed.
And the support for this software kind of been, that was one of the complaints from here and a lot of other governments with the previous software kind of, he was, customer support, and that's really bad. Cause there's nobody around the program that has four hundred anymore. Someone was saying that if you're, they're all, they have a green screen, probably, uh, if you program green screen, you would make some serious money.
Nobody knows that, too.
Thank you. Okay. Agenda item eight, is consideration of motion to approve special event permit, uh, of a rack for the bicycle ride across Georgia. Is my understanding that they do not have a representative here today, because they're riding across?
Sort of.
Okay. Sue, can you introduce the site in force, and then we'll let Mr. Britt speak on that one.
Okay, this was an application made by Franklin Johnson in Atlanta with the, um, rack, which is the bicycle ride across Georgia. It's a special event request, nonprofit, um, it has thirty-seven year history, uh, of openness of, and the average age of the participants are fifty, fifty-five. This is seven day ride from Atlanta to Savannah, that was stopping over here on Friday afternoon, getting up on Saturday morning, cause it's seventy mile ride to Savannah. They do have Georgia Southern's permission, all the paperwork is done. And they started last Saturday morning before.
Good. Did you have something you want to say, Will?
Uh, yes, ma'am, Will Britt, uh, Don Marowski called me yesterday, said, will I have jury duty? And so, uh, I said, well, okay, what can we do? He said, will you call Franklin, the gentleman here, call Franklin, Franklin, I spoke about three times. They are not selling the alcohol, that's the one thing he kind of wanted me to bring up, they're not selling it. Apparently, there must be some sort of system in place where you do everything before you even start the ride. So, maybe you're allowed X per stop, I'm not quite sure of all the details, but there is no money being exchanged. Um, the state of Georgia has approved the stops and the locations, but obviously, you know, that when you go and apply for a license to get a local license, you have to go online. Uh, excuse me, you get a state license, you have to go online and ask you for two things. One is a letter or a local license, a letter does work for the state of Georgia. And then your, your ID or proof that you, you are who you say you are. So, in order for him to file that, uh, he needs this from the City of Statesboro. It's on Georgia Southern campus, he and I spoke a little bit about that, and how Georgia Southern's kind of like Switzerland. Uh, you know, what, what happens on Georgia Southern's kind of, uh, the cities thing, so, uh, he just asked and said, uh, we even spoke yesterday, and he said, yeah, please come up. So, I can answer some questions, I can only answer, I'm not, I represent the ride and all of it. This bike ride is, it's been going on, they've been doing this beer trailer idea now for, I think, four years. So, I think he's gotten about twenty-five licenses so far since they've showed it, I think is the number he's telling me. And things have gone well, they're in swings, well, I think, over the day before, so.
And there's, uh, it says here across from the eighteen, eight, I'm sorry, eight hundred to eleven hundred, uh, team meetings, how many riders there are?
That's the riders' ride. It started off years ago, my trade actually did Gatsby, and then he did the first drag. So, that's how long ago, can you imagine trailing a bicycle, that's how long ago it was. So, uh, and they go from place to place, they have a beer, uh, trailer, which is a, which is one thing, that's new, so that's the kind of process. They're, they are not drinking and then riding bikes, I just make sure you're clear on that. They are finishing their ride, getting to a city, and then they have the opportunity, because they can't leave where they are, they're on bikes, so they're not going somewhere else, that's kind of clear. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else, just looking, where did Georgia Southern sign off on this? I see the Georgia Southern, I'll source from, but I'll see where they sign off. Okay, that's, that's all I can understand, so that's, they're signed off on the bottom?
It was not, I didn't kind of check.
Okay. Pass anything ahead, sign off. All right, does anybody have any questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve a special note permit for bicycle ride across Georgia?
Move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. As in, I am none. Consideration of motion to approve resolution two zero one six dash twenty-one. A resolution authorizing opening of a separate bank account for America's Best Communities ABC Grant. And I'm gonna practice this a little bit, um, as you all, you'd have to bend or rock. If you didn't know that city and states were rated to the final eight, and with that comes a hundred thousand dollars. And so, upon our review of the memorandum of understanding that was signed back in March, as it regards going forward, if you win, et cetera. It came to my attention, and thus to the attention of others, that we have a lot of responsibility at the City of Statesboro where that money is concerned. We're in charge of oversight of that money, dispensation of that money.
Well, you're with it.
Yes. As well as, um, overseeing the project where that money will be applied to, I use the term oversee a little bit loosely, but technically, that's how the memorandum is written. And so, we asked the ABC committee to convene and discuss the best way to make sure that we are meeting that agreement, as we, all four signed to do, and as council motion to approve back in March. And with that came some things that we need to do, uh, as a city, to make sure that we are complying in good faith with the things that we already do. So, having shared all that, Cindy, you can, this is one of the things that we felt like we needed to do to make sure there was no question or any confusion as it regards the funds.
Right. At the, at a, a meeting on the day twenty-seven, the finance committee was formed, and during the discussion that committee, or during that meeting, we are going, we are asking the council to set up a separate bank account, that we can track those funds, um, very clearly, separately. Uh, we will use the budget from, that was submitted to the ABC grant, we will have a separate fund, I'll be coming in the next council meeting, and, and then, so that we want to be able to account for very meticulously how those funds are going to be spent. As good, um, as a cleaner, instead of it being put into our bank account, us writing the checks out of it, and then having, you know, just a couple of, or revenue account of compensation accounts.
We received a breakdown yesterday, I haven't had a chance to look at it, so we got breakdown of stuff that has been prior, but let's get.
Right, the arts council, the, um, there is a bank account set up at Queensborough, there's the arts council, there's the major city, uh, that's kind of, they have paid some invoices, then they forward the rest of the money out to others. So, I believe they've received a hundred thousand, they're getting a check for that anytime. I think it's June tenth is when they will be cutting charges, and then we should receive it, they are checking that.
And one of the things is that next Thursday, the sixteenth. Um, Business After Hours is down at the, the new opening of the Fat Lab. And we're gonna take that opportunity, um, and I discussed this with Robert, you have a problem, you know, when you walk into Joe Reddick Hall, there's that little small area where we just place some stuff, plants and things like that. So, we felt like for the next several months, this would be a great opportunity to put the America's Best Communities plans, to get open public space for people to come in and see, uh, where they're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars, what they're gonna do to try and get ready for the competition, when you have to represent in March, um, to do that. So, if you come to that Business After Hours, you'll see what the plans are for America's Best Communities over the next several months. And hopefully, they will produce the list of the projects that were part of the presentation that allowed them to win the one hundred thousand dollars. But you'll see it, it looking pretty spiky, for that, at, at least until March, when the award is done, so.
Mayor, I know the committee is looking to make that display, uh, put it as much in the window as possible, so that way twenty-four seven, people, when people will walk on weekends and, um,
Yeah, just a game plan.
Yeah.
To, you know, as much as we can possibly make it, where people will come look and see, cause there's gonna be a lot of, uh, volunteer opportunities, um, that will be associated with, if you want to get involved with that. And secondly, there's gonna have to be some fundraising done. That hundred thousand dollars is not going to cover what was presented, um, uh, in the presentation, which allowed the winning of a one hundred thousand dollars. But you all knew that when you did it, so there's gonna be some fundraising in the community to raise money for some of those things that we'd like to go ahead and do as part of that presentation, uh, in March. So, there'll be fundraising opportunities, and that's one of the reasons we'll make it as clean as we possibly can. And then there'll be informational stuff that will, will be in front of Joe Reddick Hall in support of the effort, so. I think that's it. Do I have a motion then to approve resolution two zero one six dash twenty-one to establish that separate bank account?
I'll move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, excuse me, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Cindy. I know you just want something else to do, then you. Oh, goodness gracious.
Could I also point out, Mayor Joe Branton is here?
He is.
Where will we meet? Just wanted to say, hey, thanks, Joe.
We'll put them just two at times, see where we are. Nine forty-nine, a lot of looks. All right, agenda item ten, consideration of motion to approve, approve a war contract to Sykes Brothers Inc. With city, street resurfacing fiscal year two thousand and sixteen project in the amount of four hundred eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars, Mr. D.
Thank you, Mayor, glad to be here, we're city engineers. This contract is just for the city's annual street resurfacing project that we did earlier. This project was advertised for one month, and, uh, city received civil bids on May the twenty-fourth. Two bids were received, Sykes Brothers submitted a low bid of four hundred eighty-three thousand, eight hundred fifty-three dollars, based on your price. Sykes has been the city's contractor for resurfacing the last three years, and they've done very good work for us. Uh, the city's budget is five hundred nine thousand, nine hundred fifty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents this year for resurfacing. Uh, which is funded by two thousand thirteen SLOSS funds, which was three hundred thousand dollars, and also GDI LME funds, which was about two hundred ten thousand dollars basically. As we've done the last several years, since the bid came in below our estimate, we're requesting that, to have authority to spend up to the budget amount, which is five hundred nine thousand, nine hundred fifty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. That basically gives us a little bit of a leeway, if the project's going well, we're kind of right under, under budget, we can add a little bit of resurfacing in on some street where the gas is kind of issued, that's typical we've done every year for the last three years, so. So the engineers recommended to award the low bid to Sykes Brothers in the amount, in, in the amount four hundred eighty-three thousand, eight hundred fifty-three dollars, and also for the authority to spend up to the budget amount of five hundred nine thousand, nine hundred fifty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. Well, I, I'll tell you a list of these real quick.
As long as it includes West Parish.
This contract doesn't include West Parish, but we're going to advertise West Parish later in the month, so, um, regarding. This list includes Oak Street from North Side Drive to Pretoria Street. Pretoria Street, there's a section in Chandler Road that we didn't pave last year, is on there. Lafayette and Thomas Street, which are two streets that did not get paved during the CGDG project last year. The whole, the rest of them never really got paved during the CGDG project, so we felt like we need to go ahead and pave these two streets for sure, in real bad condition as well. Baby Street, East Olive Street, and Mary Wood Drive are the other streets on the list. Those are all needed, those are good streets.
Is, is that the total mileage in that four hundred thousand dollar contract?
Right, it's about one point seven two miles, and the reason it's so low is that.
Yeah, I mean, you're, usually you're about a hundred thousand dollars a mile.
That's right.
Two hundred thousand, one.
A hundred, a hundred thousand dollars a mile basically more applies to a two lane road that where you're just, just resurfacing it.
Right.
In this contract, we got Chandler, which is three lanes, then he said some of it. Then on, let's see, Thomas Street and Oak Street and Mary Wood Drive, there's actually some places where we have to tear out pavements in such bad condition, we can't really pave over it. So those tend to eat up a lot of the money too, as well.
Yeah, when you pave down, you could.
Got to put a house on your base, especially on Thomas Street, which is the street that runs by the old casual, ordinary place. That street's in such bad condition, we can't, if we pave over it, it's not going to last very long, so.
That's what's happening because we're not resurfacing, you can hear the streets every year, so we're probably losing, so the cost is going up. We're going to do less and less, and that's where it teaches possibly, that's important. Now, it'll be, we'll get a little more money next year if the gas tax changes. I was hoping it'd double, but it's like, it'd be about fifty, about fifty-three, sixty thousand, but we're getting behind.
Okay, does anybody have any further questions from Brian?
Three, you can see, two days, hold the name of the other.
Beer.
The, the other bid, the Belliswood contract?
Okay.
And the last few years, we get a bid from Sykes, and we get a bid from Belliswood, and another two a year at a time, so.
If there's no further discussion, do I have a motion to approve the award contract to Sykes Brothers, Inc. for the city's street resurfacing fiscal year two thousand sixteen project in the amount of four hundred eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Move. Second.
Do you have any discussion? All in favor, please state, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Brad. Do I have, let me see, we've got enough time here, nine fifty-five, do I have any other business from the city council that's not? All right, if not, then I'll ask for city manager's comments and put you on the clock.
Yeah, real brief, two things. First is, I want to receive one name for the alcohol advisor award, so that's, that's going on. So I need from everybody else, including the mayor, by next Monday or so, just to get it on the agenda for part of a resolution. So if everybody would, that's about. And the second, yesterday happened, I was talking to council and, boy, I'm at the time, we were having some issues and some concerns that we weren't going to get our utility building, part of the tower system, new software in, in time. And part of the reason being that we hadn't finished the meter change out for the gas meters. So we got everybody together, together yesterday, got a conference call, and looked at some deadlines. And the deadline for the meter change out was June fourth, but it wasn't all the contractors' fault, some of it was us. And as I understand from the mayor's, they said that the AS four hundred system, we had some issues, giving some of the information that we needed out and change out, so I can explain all that, maybe I should make it short. I think we got it resolved, we got our timelines, you know, which cycles, we've got three routes that we run, we're going to do them in a certain order, get those meters done in time, and so it looks like we'll still meet our goal, going live sometimes, so, wait some, so. And if something changes, we're going to put the efforts out there and get those meters in and change out.
Even if we have to put our own personnel out, but have the example, we'll do that. We'll play some, so.
Does this?
And Cindy will tell you, I mean, doing three fourths of a, of a computer change out, rollout, whatever you want to call it, is going to put her in a big box, so.
She says it's quicker for that.
Going back and forth, especially, I mean, like I said, it's like plugging an iPad into the Apollo mission, I mean, that's how that's.
Okay, thank you, moving right along. I need a motion from council to temporarily adjourn our city council meeting.
I move.
Do you have a second?
I'm following.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, um, before I do a motion to open the budget hearing, does anybody want, excuse the rush, we'll go ahead for that. Do I have a motion to open our two thousand, in fiscal year two thousand seventeen budget hearing? Do I have a second? Any discussions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The budget hearing.